Okay, it looks like we are live now, so I will go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council for June 15th, 2020. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by council member Willie.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Heavenly Father, it is with a grateful and humble heart we come before you. We thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for your protection in these times. We ask you to lead us and guide us, and we also ask that for your wisdom as we do the city's business, we ask that you give us this wisdom generously so that we do your will and not ours. We also ask that you take care of our first responders and your public servants, those who defend us both at home and abroad, and keep us from fear. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United-
The United States of America.
To the Republic of which it stands. Nation.
One nation under-
In the business with liberty-
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
For all.
Okay, the first order of business is special guests and announcements. And right now, I'd like to introduce y'all to our new director of finance. Ms. Mathis started today, and so we've already put her to work. Ms. Vega's last day is this Thursday, so we're thankful to have a few days of overlap to get that going. Ms., so the city clerk and I, Ms. Timmons, were, we did a whole lot of research before we amended the job description. I know that I spoke to multiple different sources, including our auditors. Tina and I spoke with Tasha Thompson, the former director of finance, as we were really trying to make sure that we got the person that would end up being the right fit. And I think we've got that. Ms. Liz Mathis comes to us today directly from Hot Springs Village, where she was the chief financial officer and controller. And I want to say she oversaw a $40 million annual budget. And I've asked her this so many times, but I keep forgetting to write it down in my blank here. But I think she oversaw 21 employees there at Hot Springs Village. So we are super happy to have her with us, and I've asked her to introduce herself and-
Mayor Norris, I want to point out that Liz professionally, she has a proven track record of identifying, eliminating audit deficiency. And I think we all can agree something that we were needing some assistance with. So overall, as a whole, her financial experience totally mirrors what we were looking for as a city. So I'm happy to bring Liz on board and have her part of our team.
Thank you, Tina. It's awesome.
Thank you. Liz, are you there?
I am. Thank you all. It's a pleasure to meet everybody, even though it's virtual at this point in time. Look forward to meeting you all in person. I'm very excited to be here with the city of Mammell. And now we've got some big work ahead of us, but ready to tackle that head-on and get us caught up on some things here. As Mayor Norris said, I'm coming directly from Hot Springs Village, where I've spent the last several years as their CFO and controller. And we have many of the similar things with all of the public works and parks and recreation and similar departments and tasks there. And as Ms. Timmons said, we have also had our challenges in the past with some audit deficiencies and stuff. And so I'm very proud of having been able to create some systems and processes that corrected those and got us working efficiently on a monthly basis so that things like audits became non-events that were barely a bump in the road in our daily routine, so.
Well, thank you, Liz. I've asked the council, I told, I promised Ms. Mathis that y'all wouldn't scare her away here at the first council meeting, although she did watch the last council meeting virtually. And I asked her, I said, well, did we scare you away? And she said, not at all. She's like the best meeting I've been to in a while or one. So with that, if there are any questions for Ms. Mathis, she's here. And we'll just do an open mic if you'd like.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I just welcome you here. Look forward to meeting you in person, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. We're excited, and I've got a few thumbs up. Mr. Grummer gave me a thumbs up after, I think he did an interview today. I'm not sure if Liz understood that he was actually interviewing her today, but he passed Scott's test. So again, we're happy to have you here, and we've got some work for you to do. So thank you for that. Okay, so the next item of business is the approval of the minutes from the June 1st regular meeting. Y'all should have received a copy of those already. If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to accept those minutes. I've got a motion from council member Vaprazan. Was there any, was there a second to that? Great. So I've got a motion. Second, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please unmute your mics and say yes.
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 All opposed? No. Motion carries. The next order of business is the financial statement review that would typically be done today. I told Ms. Vega last week that I would prefer if she really doubled down on the audit. And so I've asked that that be done at the next city council meeting, and that'll be Ms. Mathis, where we get to grill her over the financials for her first meeting as the new director. So the next order of business then would be a procedural motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion. Second, we do have some public comment cards. Two of them, I believe. Is that right, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
And those, of course, yeah, those will be discussed at the, on the ordinance there. But so we have a motion, second to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
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 All opposed? No. Motion carries. We will move on to the third reading of ordinance 1001, amending the Mammell Land Use Plan. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the city council, the city of Mammell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1001, and ordinance to many, the Mammell Land Use Plan and for other purposes.
Outstanding. So I believe this is the agenda item that we have two public comment cards on. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. That is correct. And I read the comments in order that I receive them, just to keep it fair.
Thank you.
Would you like me to proceed?
Please.
Okay, this first public comment I'm going to read was emailed to me from Janie Wright on behalf of Brad Fredrickson. Hopefully I didn't pronounce his name incorrectly. My name is Fred Fredrickson. I live at 31 Fairway Wood Circle, and I am the current president of the Mammell Country Club. I would like for the following to be considered as my public comment on the proposed ordinances 1001 and 1002. A resolution of the Board of Directors of Mammell Country Club passed unanimously at a special Board of Directors meeting Tuesday, June 9, 2020. Whereas the city council is scheduled to conduct a vote regarding the change use in rezoning of the former Mammell plant property. And whereas the Mammell Country Club's Board of Directors have reviewed the proposal submitted by the developer and the rail tour. And whereas the property is currently zoned as open space with limited allowed uses. And whereas Country Club is the only adjoining property completely surrounding the subject property. And whereas the Mammell Country Club property is all designated as open space for the recreational enjoyment of our members and guests. And whereas the proposed development of the subject property as a residential represents significant safety and operational threat to the business of the club. And whereas Mammell Country Club wishes the subject property to remain open space consistent with the recreational uses of the club. Be it so resolved, we, the Board of Directors of the Mammell Country Club, on behalf of its members of the club hereby formally oppose the change of land use and rezoning of the former Mammell plant property and do hereby strongly encourage the Mammell City Council to vote to reject the ordinance, which will result in such rezoning respectfully, Brad Fredrickson, President, Mammell Country Club.
Thank you. And there was another one as well, I believe. Thank you. No drinking water allowed.
They're pretty wordy. Okay, the second one we received, same subject, dated June 15, 2020. My name is Mark Bingman, and I live at Seven Chico Cove in Mammell, Arkansas. I represent the applicant, Central Arkansas Water, and requesting this land use change in zoning. CAW has spent thousands of dollars removing and cleaning up the industrial type use inherited from Mammell Water 500 as a Mammell treatment plant. CAW is asking to rezone this four-plus acres to PRD to allow for quiet conforming use in the neighborhood of a landmark golf course and individual houses and condominiums. Each time the city reviews for a possible land use change, which has not been since 2014, you look for any changes that have occurred in the area. Clearly, the removal of this industrial type use and the removal of the water wells along the river in this area have been changed. What CAW believes is the best use would be residential, much like on most of the fairways of this golf course, rather than any other commercial uses such as retail office or industrial. Your planning commission supported this by a vote of seven to zero and five to two for land use and rezoning respectively. At this time, all details of new residential development have not been finalized. The developer's intent is to build condominiums with luxury amenities featured with its own POA or condo association to govern itself. Per ordinance, the maximum number of units could be 24, but most likely will be less so not to increase any traffic counts more than what has been experienced during the 30-plus years. What is before you today is to address the best use, and he did emphasize the best use, and zoning for this area, for this improved area. The details of the site plan and street improvements and location will be brought to the planning commission at a later date and then to the council again. This meeting is just about zoning and use. We have had to date two meetings with the Mammell Country Club representatives. I believe reasonable minds and good neighbors can come together to find a common ground that will create a plan to benefit everyone. Mammell citizens as a whole will see net proceeds paid directly to an early payoff of the bond by CAW for all improvements in the city's water quality and country club. And the country club should see new memberships and new friendships for the future. We ask your support in this change. Thank you, Mark Bingman.
Thank you. I do see one question on Facebook that was just answered by council member Gardner, an individual asking who owns that land. The current owner is CAW, Central Arkansas Water. I've had a number of folks reach out to me, and I wanted to clear up a little bit of confusion that may be going on either in the public or with the council and that what we are talking about right now is amending the land use plan and the zoning map. At this time, the city council is not approving any development. So if rezoned, the owners will have to submit, among other things, a preliminary development plan that'll need to be approved by the city council after it goes back through the planning commission. Some of the review guidelines for preliminary development plans include proper screening and landscaping as well as addressing different traffic issues and safety issues related to that. So to be clear, if these ordinances are approved, it does not approve the building of any buildings to be built, doesn't approve any roads to be built, it's just approving the land use and zoning map amendments. Now, basically, every correspondence that I've had so far has, from folks who didn't favor these ordinances, is focused pretty heavily on traffic and safety issues. And I think these are very important concerns that I'm seriously concerned about, especially in that location where it is now. But those issues, I believe, need to wait their turn because we don't want to put the cart before the horse. The preliminary development plan, which the city council may approve or deny and has some feedback in, as well as the preliminary plan that will be filed and go through the planning commission, will propose ingress and egress that considers, and this is what the council can consider by the ordinances in, with regards to traffic, is safety, convenience, separation of vehicular and pedestrian traffic, general attractiveness, access to dwelling units, and the proper relationship between land uses. And those streets must discourage through traffic within the development into adjacent areas. So I think that even if a land use plan and zoning map are approved here today, I think the owners and the applicants are going to have their work cut out trying to satisfy the legitimate concerns that we're hearing from the residents and from the country club. I know the applicants have a rough draft of a design that included 24 single-story condos. I've heard it said they may propose half that number. I've also heard someone else say, well, they could build, you know, four homes on one acre lots each. And when you hear all of the, we heard a few comments from Mr. Bingman about what, or from his comments about what they anticipate going there. But this really illustrates the problem in trying to assess traffic and safety-related issues at this time is that we don't have the proposed development. We don't have the preliminary development plan by which to judge the traffic and safety issue. Obviously, the number of residences are going to play a pretty big role in how that can happen. And I would say that if these ordinances are passed today, I would strongly recommend that the applicants conduct a traffic analysis. It sounds like they've been doing that or are going to do that or have done that, and that they not propose any development that would increase traffic from the time when it was a water treatment plan and that they seriously consider the impact as the city council would end up considering the impact pretty thoroughly. Some other folks have asked me what parts of town have this special use residential land use. And so this is the same land use that's used in much of Osage Falls, Osage Terrace, Mountain Terrace, much of Riverland, and just about all of the Country Club of Arkansas. It also, the Gables and Windsor Townhomes are also in special use residential. And I feel like I need to say this for the record, and that it's my personal opinion that the change that the council is considering, which is the change from an open space to a special use residential, and that's the change the council's considering, and therefore the council, in my personal opinion, can consider changes on the applicant's property, such as the fact that the water treatment plant has been decommissioned. I also wanted to point out that as far as rezoning, if someone were to ask me if we had to rezone it, what would we rezone it to? And I would think that PRD is the best, if you're going to change it, PRD is the best because it requires a preliminary development plan that comes back to this, to the planning commission and back to the city council and has those additional safeguards that I mentioned, such as making sure there's a safe ingress and egress and that it doesn't negatively impact its surrounding. So again, if the, and I know the applicants are listening, if this does pass today, I think what we are seeing is very serious concerns about how ingress and egress could possibly occur. And I think they would have an uphill battle trying to prove and show that that can occur safely and in proper regard to the operations of its neighbors. So that was a mouthful, but I just wanted to get it on the record with that. Is there any, also, we have a representative of the, we have two representatives of the applicant, Mr. Eric Holloway with Holloway Engineering and Mr. Bingman. And then as a spokesperson for Mammell Country Club, we have Mr. Gibb Carpenter. So if there are any questions that you would like to pose to any of those folks, I can get them in here. Council member Vaprazan?
So just like everyone else, I'm sure everyone has received dozens of emails about this. My skepticism is based on, I wish that we were able to look at something hard copy to see what they're proposing. I don't have a problem necessarily changing the land use, but if I'm going to do my duty as a city council person and represent my constituents, I didn't receive anyone asking me to vote yes other than Mr. Bingman, who represents CAW. I received dozens and dozens of emails asking me to vote no. And when I stood before you several years ago as a city council, when you chose me to sit in that seat, I told you if I think the sky is blue and my constituents say it's green, they need, this is taxation without representation if I go against what they say. So I'm at a cross here. Here, I just wondered maybe if how far Mr. Holloway might think they are from having a hard copy of what they want to put in there that they could take it to Mammell Country Club and say, this is what we're proposing, and this is how we're proposing to do it. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, it sounds like you have a question for Mr. Holloway. Was that what you were asking? Okay. Mr. Holloway, you should be coming on in and are unmuted.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for the question. We have been working with a preliminary plan, but as I think is already said, it's just kind of a, we need to get through this process before we really spend a lot of time and money and effort towards what a development plan would look like. I think that the mayor said it appropriately, that we are working with transportation engineers and looking at different traffic studies and what the overall impact. We hope to continue to work with the Country Club to, if this is successful, to come up with a plan that fits what everybody wants. And I understand some people don't want anything at all, but obviously we believe that whether it's one or 24, that this is the right use for the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any, was there any additional discussion?
I do want to hear from other folks and what their thoughts are in representation as far as how they feel about this situation. Thank you, Mayor.
Council member Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that you gave that introduction because it pertains to some of the comments that I have to make as well. First, I want to thank CAW for everything they've done for our town. They took a water system that was adequate, but in great need of repair and upgrading, they've spent close to a bazillion dollars improving our lines and improving the quality of the water in our city. And for that, we are truly grateful. I also want to say that I am a pro-growth council member. I believe that the city has to keep growing. We have to find ways of continuing with revenue growth in the city. Otherwise, fewer and fewer people are going to be bearing more and more of the expenses as they naturally will rise over time. So I'm not an anti-growth person. You look at land use, and I know that Mr. Neri used to say that you wanted to find the highest, best use for property, but that's two parts, highest, best use. And so that's something that we need to keep in mind. What I am really basing everything I'm thinking about on are the two items that were brought forward by the city attorney, one was 94, 492, which kind of says that it's our city's policy to preserve open space. It's not a law. It's not a rule, but it's kind of like a policy. Once you have open space, that it's nice to leave open space, otherwise we, you know, we just don't have any free space, no white space around the edges at all. The other item that we look at is 54-79, and there are three criteria outlined there. And they're not ands, they're either ors. And one of them is that other changes have occurred in the neighborhood since the land use plan was adopted, which was 2014. And the major change that occurred was that the water company building was torn down and some significant work was done to meet environmental quality standards that are required for any use of the land. The second one is that whether the changes resulted in a change of the neighborhood's character sufficiently to justify the proposed land use plan change. Well, it went from being a public utility, which, you know, we just really didn't have anything else to put that in. It was actually almost kind of like an industrial use in a way, but it was still zoned open space. So we say, okay, has the neighborhood's character changed sufficiently for us to make the change from open space to some other zoning? And the third one was that issues and concerns raised by the neighborhoods was submitted with specificity to enable the commission or city council to respond to the issues. To me, there are two types of neighborhoods involved in the country club. One includes the homes that are built around the golf course there because there aren't any right in that area, but they're just, they surround that area. And the other one is a neighborhood of maybe not residents, but users of the land. These are the people who take advantage of the country club, families, children, you know, they're used to what they have there. It's very important to them. And like council member Vaprazan, excuse me, I received 68 emails that were not in favor of making a change to a different zoning. Now, the other side of that is that we do have to keep in mind that we're not approving a build, that we're just approving a zone change. So those are the things that I looked at was really the 94-492 and 54-79. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Council member Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, I'm going, I keep hearing this word use, and I understand that we're changing a zoning on the property, we're being asked to change the zoning. And I keep hearing this word use, and I've even heard a technical term called highest and best use. And I'm afraid that most, if not all, of the other people in the city council don't understand the concept of highest and best use. And anytime you're dealing with vacant land or even an improved property, you look at the value of the land plus the value of the improvement. So you're valuing vacant land. Highest and best use is probably the most important factor in valuing land. It's composed of four tests that have to be satisfied. And when you talk about highest and best use, you're talking about a highest and best use. There is no such thing as absolutely one and only one highest and best use. That just doesn't exist. Now, in order to qualify as a highest and best use, it has to meet four tests. It has to be legally permissible, which is what we're here today to vote on to see if this residential use would be legally- This residential use um, would be legally permissible. Another, it has to be physically uh, possible. And that land I've driven over there, it's flat enough. I mean, it's not a mountain top side. It's physically possible to put condominiums there. Another is, it has to be. It has to be maximally productive. I think of any commercial uses, and I have appraised thousands of commercial properties over the years. And um. I, I think residential is probably the way to go because it's conforming with the neighborhood, because there's other condos already around that golf course. Um, another thing, it has to be uh, financially feasible. Well, anytime you're building homes or condos for people, it's nearly always financially feasible to do that. So it needs three out of the four already. Okay, the ground, you know, maximally productive, physically possible. Um, financially feasible. Now, we have to determine whether it's going to be legally permissible or not. So I just thought I would give you some background on what they mean when we're talking about highest and best use. So if we, if we elect to allow the zoning change. To some sort of residential, then it meets all four of the requirements for residential as a highest and best use. Um, I just wanted everybody to understand what we're talking about here. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Um, Mr. Mosley, Councilmember Mosley, I s- I believe I saw your hand up.
Yes, sir. I uh, I wanted to uh, make a few comments here. I'm, I'm going to be a no vote tonight. Uh, I'm, I'm basing my decision primarily on the uh, guidelines that are laid out in our city code. Uh, that uh, Ms. Scott talked about earlier. Said, uh, we shall base our decision using the following guidelines. It says other changes that occurred in the neighborhood since the land use plan was adopted, et cetera. And I, I would like to note the word other. So I'm, I'm, I'm reading that to be something other than what, that piece of property that we're looking at. I see no other changes in that neighborhood that occurred in many, many, many years. Uh, that country club's been there and the situation has been as it has uh, for fifty years. As such, since there's no changes, I can't see any changes. I, I don't see that there's any justification. For making a proposed land use change. Like to compare this area over to the White Oak Crossing, as I did in a previous meeting. That area over there is, is rapidly changing. We've got a White Oak Crossing that goes out, and we got a new interchange. And so a lot of that land along White Oak Crossing along there is very appropriate to go ahead and, and change uh, land use and zoning. Uh, to bring in commercial uh, certain residentials and, you know, high-density residentials like we're talking here. Uh, this area is, is not changing. This is, this is completely the opposite. This is an unchanged area. Um, I'd like to also point out, as some of the other council members have, that we've had uh, many emails opposing this. I have not gotten one email uh, asking for us to approve this, and that's something I think we need to consider. One thing we also need to remember is, is that this, this land has always been zoned open space. It's never been zoned anything else. The owners of this land, which is C A W, has, has no. Uh, because it's always been zoned open space, there's no expectation of being able to use it or sell it for anything else. So it's not like we'll be depriving them of something. It's not like it's already zoned for residential. Or commercial or something like that, where we'd be denying them the ability to use the zoning that's already there. This is open space. It's never been anything other than open space, so there's, there's, there's no, there should be no expectation. Uh, this is just a bonus if we should happen to approve this. Um, and if, if those of you would, you know, were uh, gonna vote yes, and you have some justification for. That they, that's asked for in that uh, uh, city code, please, please state it. I'd, I'd like to hear it. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there any, any additional discussion? Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I appreciate you kind of leading off, talking about the process a little bit. Um, because a number of, well, the majority of the emails that I received were all asking us to not approve uh. The condominium project. Um, I think there was um, maybe a misunderstanding that what we were doing tonight was actually approving. Some sort of residential development, which we're not. And um, so Councilmember Vapurzan, kind of to come back to your original question. About, you know, where, where to go with this. Um, you know, I, I tend to agree with uh, the planning commission. And the staff comments that residential probably is the, the highest and best use for this. Uh, but it still has to go through its own day in court, if you will. Uh, it's got to go back to the planning commission if it is approved as residential. And, and the planning commission is going to have to make sure anything meets um, city code. And then it's going to come, a- as I understand it, Mr. Mayor, it's gonna, would then come back to us like it does any other uh, planned residential district. So uh, I know we haven't seen anything yet, but that doesn't mean it, it should or shouldn't be residential. Uh, that just means if whatever is proposed, it's going to be reviewed in, on its own. Um, and so there may be a time where. Uh, they decide not to do condominiums. It could be like, you know, as mentioned, it could be just a few uh, houses sitting on nice big lots. I mean, that's just something that'll have its own day uh, with the planning commission, and then also it would come back to us again. So. Um, and I know there's been a lot of discussion regarding the, I guess, whether or not we have the authority to do this. Based on that, that pesky little word of, of other that is in there. Um, and the way that I have been reading this over the last month, um, you know, one of the, the, the big changes was the fact that there. This was basically an industrial type setting with a, a water treatment plant, and that's now been uh, completely, you know, uh, demolished. And now it's just a vacant lot. To me, that is a big change in the neighborhood. Um, that would cause us to be able to look at this. So I guess from a legal standpoint, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm not an attorney and, and we'll have to see where that goes, but I would be okay with us considering making the change. I don't necessarily uh, have an issue with that. Um, and then, you know, one other thing I looked at, I'm, I'm all for protecting open space. Uh, and several of the emails that I received asked us to keep this as open space. Um, but this appears to be a little quirk in our city code where the city code was crafted to allow. Municipal um, facilities like this in open space zoning. Uh, and if you look at our, our land use map or our zoning map online, you're going to see little ribbons all over the city of Marmel. Where our, our trails and where our parks are. And as best I could tell, and I, I may have missed some, but uh, the only parcels of land. That I saw that were zoned open, uh, o- open space like this, wa- was that the side of the old water treatment plant? And then there's a site up on top of the hill above city hall where the current water towers are. And so it's just interesting to me that, you know, we're, we're talking about protecting open space, but really it seems like Marmel crafted the city code. To allow these um, uh, municipal buildings and, and projects to be built on open space. So I don't necessarily see this as protecting open space because it was a, it wasn't a park. If you look at Lake Willistee, our other parks, they're zoned O S for a reason. We want to protect that. And this wasn't necessarily uh, open space to begin with. It was a water treatment plant. So I guess I, I'm personally comfortable with us being able to change it if the council votes that way. And then, you know, to Councilmember Vapurzan to what he, what his concerns were. Um, there's going to be a whole other review process for whatever they bring forward. And so that's going to have to be approved yet again by the planning commission. And then it's going to come right back to us uh, to look at an actual development plan. So uh, that's just my thoughts on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holt, did I see your hand up earlier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Mayor, I had, uh, like everybody else, I've had two very extensive visits uh, with Mr. Bingman. Um, and we've been very uh, uh, frank with each other. Uh, we talked about a whole, a number of things, too many to talk here, but in regards to two thousand and one, two thousand and two. Uh, those two ordinances. We spoke about them. He made the point that I was putting the cart before the horse, that. Um, that indeed we are just uh, uh, approving the preliminary. But he, in his letter, he said that they, the final plans have not actually been uh, put together yet. And I said, well, that's the whole problem. The people of the country club, they don't know what to expect. If they knew what to expect first, then um, uh, the zoning and, and mapping everything would be, would be okay. But it seems to me that, that, that those things should come first. There are so many things that I feel like that. The point is, the people that have lived there in peace and, and are taxpayers. Uh, they have supported the community. The, the country club is what it is. They simply are in total ob- uh, object uh, to this, uh, to this going through. I feel like that the council is in very, for me, it's very difficult for me to vote yes, because I am uh. To be a jurist and make the decision of how this should fall and to affect someone else's life. When it doesn't affect the city overall, it affects that particular um, zone and country club. Um, I, I simply will not be able to vote in favor of this ordinance tonight. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think I'm losing my connection.
Did you not hear me?
Yeah, I think I'm loo-
Are you okay? Can you hear me now?
Councilmember Holt, we heard you just fine. Thank you.
I think we're losing the mayor.
Mayor, it's not you.
Well, while the cat's away. Can anyone hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Sorry, my screens all went on a fritz. Um, I heard everything. Uh, Councilmember Holt said, I believe, uh, Councilmember Williams had her hand up.
I did, and thank you, Mayor. Um, it just seems to me that if C A W owns this property, uh, and it's. Uh, it was allowed to have a, a water plant on it. I mean, they can, they can come in there and put some other uh, industrial type building on this property that they own. It seems to me if we rezone it, um, and we, you know, we are, we are the body to do that. Then it gives us more control over what actually goes in this particular area. So, I mean, if, uh, if they, if. If the options are something else that was industrial and uh, is C A W related. That's option one, and option two is something beautiful that has been brought before us and has complete oversight. And we decide and have some control over what goes there. I would rather vote for the rezoning. Just so that we can, we, we will know, we will know actually what goes there and, uh, and have some control over that. And that's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Tierney, did I see your hand up?
Yes. Uh, yes, uh, like, uh, everyone else, I've, uh, received numerous letters about this. Generally, uh, not in favor. Uh, there are several people I've talked to. And actually, some of them, after I talked to them, explained some of the misconceptions, actually changed their opinion and to being in favor. Uh, but the crux of all the opposition always comes back to the issue of the access road. And uh, in that respect, I, I agree with all their concerns and uh, you know, and, and, as you know, in the, in the very first meeting, I was like, well, why don't we uh, put the access road to the south? Uh, the last meeting we had on this, I was like, well, why not go to the north? Uh, now, there's been a lot of disinformation out there, and I'd like to ask you a question, Mr. Mayor, uh, that I've had people tell me both sides of, of an answer. Uh, is that in the, you had a meeting with the board of the country club this week, uh, where the petitioner was also present. And uh, I've, I've been told that the subject of putting a road, you know, changing the access to the south was roach. Uh, and uh, the, the city, the country club was actually considered that being a good possibility. And uh, you know, the perversion I heard was that it was the petitioner who didn't want to do it. Can you give me any kind of veracity on that one way or the other?
So here's, here's the problem. Yes, Councilmember Tierney, here's the, here's the problem. Wh- what was said at that meeting or what uh, an applicant promises to do? Or, and e- even if they were to present a written plan that y'all decided on, is irrelevant to what they actually are gonna. I mean, it may be irrelevant to what they're gonna end up putting in. I can't remember the story, but I, I, you know, um. Uh, I know there have been times where something was um, changed and approved to be a particular development. That company went bankrupt, someone else bought it and put something completely different there. And so the problem with considering any of the specifics of where a road is going to be. Or how many units um, are going to be on that in a rezoning issue is that. We could come back tomorrow and they could submit something completely different. Um, but I, I, I did not have a meeting with the country club or um, uh, the applicants. They had a meeting and I was invited to attend. Um, and a, uh, there was discussion about a, a road to the other side of the country club. Um, and one of the things that the applicant said is they didn't think that that was financially uh, feasible. To build the road to that side. I'm going to stop short of saying that. The, the um, club would have approved or disapproved. Of that, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. That way I know what was actually said, done, and uh, you know, I'm, I'm glad to hear that the country club was at least a, you know, starting to show a little flexibility. About let's try to find another way to do it. Uh, you know, for me, uh, it is the access is, is the core issue here. And I mean, if we had a, a better plan on how to get in and out of there, uh, you know, I think open space is a very good plan, uh, as a councilperson. Uh, Williams was saying, you know, we have better control over what goes in there with, with uh, removing open space to go into P R D. Uh, but right now, you know, I, I'm, I have to kind of side with all the uh, the residents and all, you know, because we, we've got a Marmel, a Marmel issue. We've got a, a Marmel resident representing a Marmel corporation to, uh, you know, try to gain access to a piece of land that's surrounded by another Marmel corporation. That's populated by a lot of other Marmel residents. So this is a, a very unique Marmel problem that we have, and I've, I've been trying to find a solution on it. You know, any way I could suggest something. And uh, I'd just like to have uh, those solutions in place uh, before we go, you know, to make any great changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I, I'm getting several text messages from, from all the parties involved asking to talk. So what the um, uh, what my position is, is in accordance with ordinance one thousand that says, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and have you on board. If there's any specific questions from the council toward those individuals, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, but that, that I'm not really opening it up for discussion at this time. Um, Madam City Attorney?
I did just want to point out one thing, because there's been a dis- you know, discussion of a lot of different um, subjects surrounding this. The guidelines, you know, uh, Councilmember Mosley already discussed the guidelines that are set out for us in fifty-four dash seventy-nine. That the council is used to consider, uh, it uses to consider this type of issue. I did want to just clarify that there is an and in that list. So those four items that are mentioned there, the, the third one says, and other substantial or technical evidence. So we do need to make sure that our analysis includes each one of those guidelines, uh, and where this situation falls with respect to that.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Vapurzain.
Quick question, Mayor. With, with the way it's zoned right now, what could be put in there?
Uh, I haven't, nothing is a matter of right. There's a, a list of conditional uses, I believe. Um, and the city attorney may be able to pull that up quicker.
I have it right here.
Go ahead. Thank you.
The conditional uses, the first is municipal governmental, private, or philanthropic recreational use. Including parks, playgrounds, tennis courts, golf courses, skating rinks, and hiking or bridle paths. Two, country club, golf course, swimming pool, tennis courts, or other private recreational uses usually associated with or incident. Incidental to a social country club operated for mutual recreation for the members and not as a business for profit. Three, wildlife refuge or bird sanctuary. Four, greenhouses and structures associated with an arboretum, not operated for profit. Five, recreation, refreshment, and service buildings and parks, playgrounds, and golf courses. Six, parking facilities. Seven, public utility buildings and facilities, including units for residential emergency personnel when necessary for serving the surrounding area. Provided no public business office and no repair or storage facility or sewer treatment plant are built. And eight, educational facilities.
Okay, thank. So I, now I understand better, I have, getting to hear everyone, uh, why C A W doesn't want to spend any more money. Because if we say no, then they wasted money, uh, while we, while we still would like to see something. Um, and I like, uh, Councilmember Williams' point to the fact that whatever happens here, we have the full control over that. Um, it's got to go through us, whatever's going to go in there. Um, it's gotta go through us, whatever's gonna go in there, we have the control over it. And I guarantee you with our constituents in mind, um, if there's something that is feasible to the mall mail country club. Uh, if they're able to work something out, C A W works something out to beautify it. I think mall mail country club would be in favor of that. I think the danger is right now that everyone's worried that they're gonna put a bunch of apartments in there, there's gonna be all this traffic. When I think that it's gonna be, I don't, I, I feel it's gonna be the opposite of that. Um, so I, I wish we could have time together to talk things out, uh, kinda like we do over budget meetings over a big situation like this. But I certainly appreciate everyone's input, because it helps to clarify what it is that we're actually voting on. We're not voting on putting anything in there. We're voting on giving someone the opportunity to put someone there that we have the opportunity to say yes or no when it comes back to us. So I, I appreciate that very much. All we're voting on tonight is giving someone the opportunity to put something before us in the future that we can say yes or no to. Uh, I can guarantee you that I'm not gonna say yes to anything that's gonna put a lot of traffic through that area and nor would you. So I appreciate everyone's input and uh, thank you so much for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, uh, something popped up on my screen, uh, indicating maybe give Carpenter was wanting to say something. Would he, I wonder if he's interested in responding to any of these comments?
Sure, so you're asking a question of Mr. Carpenter. And I, I, I'm getting questions from multiple people. Mr. Carpenter, you are in the um. You are here, you're live. You are muted.
He's still muted.
Oh, hang on, sorry, I think I just remuted him. Mr. Carpenter, there you go.
Goodbye now.
You're good to go, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Mosley, for the opportunity. Uh, the city attorney's done a great job of reiterating the burden on the change of open space, that it is somewhat sacred. I don't know the code letter and verse, but I know any rezoning matter also takes into consideration. The feelings of the adjoining and neighboring property owners. And Mall Mill Country Club is zoned open space, and the, the subject property is zoned open space. And it is not joining our property, it is right in the middle of our property. And there can be a lot of speculation about a lot of possible uses. But those uses narrow down significantly if it remains open space. And to Alderman Vapurzan and Alderman Williams and others that have been concerned, control, uh, concerned. About controlling the use, you still control the use. What concerns us is the planning commission kicked it to you. There's discussion of kicking it back to the planning commission and so forth and so forth. Mall Mill Country Club would like that property to stay just like it is, open space. It's right in the middle of our property, open space. It is really hopefully consistent with future recreational uses by people that belong to our country club. And in one other note, um. I, I don't remember, I guess it was, uh, Alderman Saunders talked about one of the, or the four requirements. Well, one of them was the economy, and the mayor did point out that the applicant has issues with the uh, the economy. Of an access route that doesn't disturb our business. So is that, that consideration, but primarily the objection of the adjoining property owner. And it's actually the surrounding property owner. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, Mr. Mosley?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm glad he, glad he said that. I, I would mention that I, I took a tour over there and and checked out the situation, and I think it's very helpful to have done that. Uh, as far as uh, open space, what that means in that area, because the country club is open space and it surrounds that area. And uh, it just, uh, it, it's hard to envision that being anything other than open space uh, going forward. So um, I, I hope the rest of the uh, council members took a tour, especially if you're gonna vote yes on this. But uh, I think that's all I've got to say, other than, uh, I don't know that we can call a, a word in the um. In the uh, city code as, as a quirk, uh, it, I, I think it's a word that is meant to be there, the, the word other. Other changes that have occurred to the neighborhood. Uh, and it needs to be pointed out too, the open space, that's, if you're talking about controlling land use or or whatever, that, that is the best way to do it. Because about the only thing that could be built there is something like a water treatment plant. Uh, I think that's, that's all you could build, otherwise it needs to be parks or something recreational. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott? I, I believe you're muted.
I move that we approve ordinance one thousand one.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Scott and a second by Councilmember Gardner. Um, is there any discussion? Councilmember Tierney, you are.
Uh, yes, just, uh, you know, in, in all fairness, uh, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Bing, since we gave, uh, the country club a chance to kind of do a late minute rebuttal, if he would like to do the same.
You have a question for Mr. Bingman. I will bring him in. Mr. Bingman, you are on your way in if you could unmute yourself. Mr. Bingman, it shows you are muted. There we go. Looks like you are unmuted, sir.
You know, um, councilmen and women, I, I, I really don't have anything else to add. Um, as we have stated, uh, we're about the zoning and the best use for this land. The details of the site plan, the details of the road is the next phase, not this phase. Uh, and certainly, uh, no one is intending to uh, increase any traffic. Uh, that seems to be the concern, uh, if we need to uh, downsize to whatever number that is. To create uh, the same type of traffic flow that has been there for thirty-plus years. Uh, it's my understanding this developers is willing to do that, as he stated in the meeting with the uh, uh, country club board. So uh, the, the, the concerns are real, and I understand that. Um, but I think, uh, if everybody would just sit down and, and find it, try to find common ground. Uh, everything could be a win-win for everyone.
Thank you. I was wondering what you were gonna say about that.
Thank you, sir. Um. I have lost some functionality on my computer, so it looks like you will sit right there, uh, for the time being. Is there any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance one thousand one. Any additional deliberation? Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please. Uh, you are muted.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
Councilmember Vapurzan?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Motion fails. Um, ordinance one thousand one is not approved. That'll bring us on to uh, ordinance one thousand and two. Um, the only, uh, if we could get a reading of that. Madam City Clerk?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. And ordinance to be entitled ordinance number one thousand two, and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Thank you. I think it should be noted, uh, that the zoning uh, cannot occur. Uh, because the land use was not changed, so that's the only thing I would add. Uh, is, is, is just that. So is there any discussion or deliberation on ordinance one thousand two?
Motion to approve ordinance one thousand two.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Councilmember Saunders?
No.
Councilmember Scott?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Vapurzan?
No.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
Motion fails, ordinance one thousand two is rejected. And that brings us on to, first of all, uh, I don't want to move on too quick. I want to thank the folks, uh, um, at the country club and the applicants. Um, uh, I know they've met several times and, and they took some time out this last week to meet also. Uh, uh, I appreciate it. Um, so with that, we will move on to new business, uh, which is the first reading of ordinance. One thousand and eight, amending section ninety-four dash nine of the Mammill City Code. Madam City Clerk, treasure?
It being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. And ordinance to be entitled ordinance one thousand eight, and ordinance amending section ninety-four dash nine of the Mammill City Code. To permit the mayor or his or her designee to apply to the Mammell Planning Commission for amendments to chapter ninety-four of the Mammill City Code. Zoning regulations and for other purposes.
Oh, thank you. Uh, it looks like I was muted. Uh, procedurally, I'm gonna nerd out here just a little bit. This is the ordinance that was passed by a resolution, uh, by the city council and sent to the planning commission, who then. Uh, reviewed it and recommended it back to the city council for approval. Uh, we realized that the um, amending chapter ninety-four, that the mayor staff couldn't make recommendations. So we had to bring it to the council. This is what we've been doing for a while, but apparently we missed something in the code and our. Uh, city attorney so vigilantly caught it, uh, and so that's what it is. Um, we've seen it before in the form of a resolution, and it's back again now. Um, so if, and it's on first reading, if there's any discussion on that. We can have it. I don't see anyone jumping up and down out of their seat. So it'll remain, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Which brings us to the first reading of ordinance one thousand nine, amending the Mammill zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. And ordinance to be entitled ordinance one thousand nine, and ordinance amending the Mammill zoning map and for other purposes.
All right, this is the property, y'all should have seen the, the list. It might look like a familiar property. It came to the city council not too long ago when it was being rezoned. The applicants uh, wouldn't uh, formally announce what they wanted to do with the land once it was rezoned. Uh, and so the council um, uh, went ahead and rezoned it, and it turns out that what they wanted to put on it. Wouldn't have fit in that zoning category, and so they're back seeking to uh, rezone it at this time. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Gardner?
Technically, isn't the C two, uh, I don't, I'm gonna say the wrong word here. It's not necessarily a downgrade. It just, it allows for a, some more limited uses of commercial. Is that correct?
I think that's, so in most zoning categories, and, and city attorney will correct me when I'm wrong. In, in most cities, a C two would almost be like a lesser included um, uh, zoning category. But there's some differences in some things that are allowed in C two but not C three. So uh, in this case, it's, it's seen as a bit of a um, lighter commercial, uh, and less heavy. But it just so happens that this use uh, fits in C two but is not allowed in C three. Did I say that right?
Yeah, yes, sir. Oh, you're asking attorney.
Yes.
That's what I, the lighter, that's the, that's the word I was looking for, lighter commercial, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna say basically what Caleb said, but I'm gonna just say it just a little bit differently. In a, in a typical scheme for zoning, you, you have, you know, C one and, and C two takes in all of C one and adds a few more things. And then it's the same way with each step. Ours is a little different. So C two has some uses that were not included in C three, like our C two allows um. Restaurants with dancing and live entertainment. I don't think that's included in C three. Um, theater, cinema, stage productions, uh, and then, of course, you know, many other categories too. So it's not, um, it's a little bit unique in our code scheme, and that it's just, it's really just different, different uses than C three.
Um, uh, does that answer your question, Councilmember Gardner? Was there any uh, additional discussion on this? Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, I was, uh, I was the lone no vote when we zoned at C three, and that was because. They uh, wouldn't say what they were going to use it for, and that made me very uncomfortable. I, I have no problem with it going from C three to C two and uh, have no problem with it being a service station if that's what goes in there. So uh, at this point, I'm a yes. Uh, I think I get a little bit more bad rap for saying no quite often than I, than, than I deserve. But, but in this case, I see absolutely no reason not to do this. Thank you.
Got you. Also, the, I got a, I did get a call from the applicant, and I said I wasn't gonna bring it up, but I, I will bring it up. The, the, the question was whether or not the council, having considered this uh, previously, if the council would uh. Consider waiving the, the second and third readings and having them both tonight. Um, I said I wouldn't necessarily advocate for it, and I wasn't gonna bring it up, but uh, here I am bringing it up.
Are you up into a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Mosley, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holt, uh, yes, if the, if the council so chose, yes.
I would make a motion that we um, amended and, and we have second and third reading immediately.
Second.
I guess I would just have a little bit of um, trepidation in that what, what is the? I understand that we've already considered it, but uh, is there any type of emergency situation or um, special situation that would justify us not? Going through our normal process of three readings.
I don't believe that's a requirement, is it?
Um, I believe it is, if you're gonna have an emergency clause. Uh, now, I don't know if it's to waive the three readings on three separate occasions. And I'm a little limited, because I don't have access to Westlaw, because I'm on my computer.
And both of my monitors here are dead. I'm, I'm not aware of a, any sort of requirement. Uh, uh, Councilmember Mosley is just about blocking out his face, uh, waving his hand, so you're.
I would, I would put this in there, the, the applicant had to uh, get a, what was it? Uh, Mr. City Attorney, a waiver, uh, approved by the, what was it, a waiver?
They had to have a waiver. Normally, if you have just requested that an area be rezoned and there's uh, been a vote on it. You have to wait twelve months to resubmit it unless you have good cause shown. Um, and they had to request a, a waiver and um. They had to consider whether there was good cause for granting that waiver for them to consider the rezoning again.
Uh, from, from what I remember from that meeting, they, they uh, had to look pretty hard for, for the justification. But they said that since they were up- but they said that since they were upgrading it from three to two, since it was an upgrade, they would go ahead and grant that waiver. So kind of the way I look at it is they've already been, they've, they've been very fortunate, I think, with the planning commission that they went ahead and considered it instead of waiting a year. So I, I, I don't know that we owe them a special treatment of waiving second and third readings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Was there any additional discussion? Councilmember Scott?
I was just wondering, does it delay building? Is there, is there some reason why they requested that this be expedited?
Well, other than it be expedited, and, and let me be clear, I, I, I don't, this isn't in the vein of something that I would have supported, but considering the circumstances, it wasn't completely insane. So I'm not, I'm not here advocating for it, just bringing it up as something that was brought up to me. But I have, I've heard of no specific hardship caused by this. And of course, this, yeah. So with that, is there any additional discussion? On, in the motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
I've, I've said this before and I know Alman Mosley has too. In fact, everybody has. I'm not big, unless it's an emergency or a critical situation. I think we should always have three readings to give the public time to comment to us. So I'm not in favor at all of doing that. Waiving that last, or going ahead and doing all three readings.
Got you. So we have a motion and a second to have the second and third readings tonight. Any other discussion before we move on to a roll call vote?
Mayor, I did find a statute, this requires a two thirds vote to have the second and third readings on the same day.
Got you. Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Scott, is your hand up?
No, I'm scratching my eyes. Sorry.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Saunders?
No.
Councilmember Scott?
No.
Councilmember Gartner?
No.
Councilmember William? Was that a no, ma'am? I read your lips.
Here, let me unmute you. You may need to accept.
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Vapurzain?
No.
And Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Motion passes.
Stand, motion fails. I mostly brought it up to see how many motions we could deny in one night. No, thank you all. It'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting if there's no further discussion at this time. All right, it'll be on second reading. The next order of business is on discussion of consolidating departments. So I would have a proposal to make and it's one that I've been thinking about for years and years and years. But more specifically, ever since Jim Morley, the former director of code enforcement, as soon as he retired. In fact, I think I may have brought it up, but I am proposing that we merge the departments of planning and zoning along with code enforcement, building and permits at this time. It was something that I was considering back when Mr. Morley retired. But with Mr. Neary at the helm of planning and zoning, I felt as though maybe just keeping things going the way they were would be the best option. One of the reasons, and so let me, let me tell you a little bit about how that would occur generally. This is a, an expense neutral proposal, not asking to hire anyone on or anything along those lines at this time. But basically, the currently vacant position of director of planning, zoning would become the department head. And then the director of code enforcement, building and permits would become the deputy director. I wanted to point out and make this crystal clear is that this, this is not designed to accommodate for any sort of weaknesses by Mr. Trent Carter, who I think has done an amazing job coming on board. This merger would be not made because of personalities in the positions, but because of some of the things I'll talk about here in a moment. So one of the things that I have noticed that the city could do a lot better job of is collaboration between departments. It, heck, it's even confusing right now if you're applying for a permit, who you're supposed, you know, who do you go to to get that permit? Who, if you're applying for a preliminary development plan, where does that go versus where does code enforcement go? And so on and so forth. So I think that by merging these departments, we, we could have more collaboration. I've been experimenting with that a little bit as the position of planning and zoning director has remained vacant. And Mr. Scott Grummer has sat in that position as the interim. And I've watched some of the ways that, that those departments can address certain things better, be it drainage issues. If you, if you think about it, the flood planning manager was, was, previously was Mr. Neary in planning and zoning, but our building inspectors and permits were the ones out there checking for compliance. So our MS4 compliance with ADQ was through planning and zoning, but then permits was responsible for the actual monitoring of different site controls and issuing citations. We're hoping that by merging them together, we'll have a more, more collaboration throughout the whole process, all the way from the time when plans are being drawn until boots are on the floor, inspecting and verifying that the subdivision was properly put in. And, and yeah, so I, those, those are the, the primary reasons. So what I'd like to do is open this up for discussion and then ultimately ask for a motion merging planning and zoning with code enforcement, building and permits. And I think that'll suffice initially. We'll probably have to follow it up with some, some ordinance flushing out a few things. But open floor, who has something they want to say? No hands are popping up. Yeah. Pardon me, Councilmember Scott?
I, I think it's a really good idea. It makes a lot of sense.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'd, I'd echo Ms. Scott's comments there. I've thought about that and I think, I think you and I had a brief visit about that maybe two years ago, but I think that's a, a great idea. I think, I think that would work well. I appreciate your creativity and, and you've really thought that out, it sounds like. Thank you.
Thought it out and then we've had a little bit of a trial. But in fact, those who've toured the building, the renovations will know that we put code enforcement and planning and zoning together in the same pod and we're already seeing extra communications between them and collaboration specifically on some of the drainage issues that we're seeing, which Mr. Grummer's been doing an amazing job at. I believe Mr. Councilmember Tierney had his hands up.
Yeah, I believe it's an excellent suggestion. Anytime you can streamline functions, get all, everybody work together where you don't have a situation where the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing. I think that's, that's a great plan and I'd like to propose that we take a vote on merging planning, zoning and permits into one department.
Second.
Can I, can I interpret that as a motion? Was that a motion there, Councilmember Tierney? And I heard a second, I believe, by Councilmember Scott. Was there any other discussion deliberation? I, I don't think I see any, Councilmember Holt, is your hand up or?
Oh, no, sorry, sorry.
Okay. Just trying to make sure I'm not missing anyone. So it looks like we, we have a motion and a second to merge planning and zoning with code enforcement, building and permits. Last call for any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and get started on that. Thank you for that. I promise you, I have no intent of calling it the Department of Planning, Zoning, Code Enforcement, Building and Permits, unless I can find a nice little acronym that, that, that spells out. So that concludes new business. I want to move on to Mayor's comments. I'll hit, first of all, Fourth of July, Independence Day. We will be having fireworks at Lake Willistee. And we will be having a convoy, which I believe is the technical term for what we've been seeing for some of the high school graduates that looks like a parade. And it'll kind of tour all throughout the city and hit up different areas. There won't be people walking, but everyone will be driving. I think it's a great opportunity if anyone wants to convoy with us. Parks and Rec, I believe, made their announcement. It'll start at 4:00 PM on the fourth. We'll get that route posted here pretty quick, but it'll go through all four wards. And, and in these unusual times, be a way to, to celebrate independence. The fireworks show will go on as normal, but there will not be a fourth fest. So there will be no food vendors, booths set up and the like. So that, that was that update. If there's any questions on that, Councilmember Scott?
Would you reiterate what the rules are for individuals' fireworks, just for the public's knowledge?
Yes, you can. I, I wish I would have pulled that up. You, you can shoot off fireworks at a, between a particular window, certain hours on, on the fourth. I don't have those hours in front of me, but I do know it needs to. Is it four to 10:00 PM?
I think it's four to 10:00.
Yes, and, and they're supposed, I haven't looked at this since last year, but you're supposed to shoot off the fireworks on private property and not commercial property. So if folks are shooting off fireworks, please don't shoot them off early and please don't shoot them off after that timeframe. Please be respectful of your neighbors. This is something that I personally like that Monell has, but it's in jeopardy every year because of some people that abuse it. So please shoot fireworks off in your own yards between the proper hours and promptly end them at that time. Madam City Attorney, do you happen to know off the top of your head, some more details that we can share?
My recollection is the same as what Councilmember Gardner just mentioned and I don't think it's in the book that I have, so I would have to be able to pull it up. But I, I believe four to 10 is correct and it is to be on private property, not supposed to be in the streets. Make sure, and please be courteous in picking up your trash and don't get it on your neighbor's property. That's a common complaint as well.
Yes, thank you. So I've covered this, that. So the governor announced this week with, with, related to COVID-19, that we were moving into phase two. We've gone ahead and opened up the playgrounds and those are open. We did so without a whole lot of fanfare and announcements so that not everyone would rush out to the playground at the same time. But those are open. We are starting this week with a very scaled back opening of the Center on the Lake. It'll start by allowing two individuals at a time in the fitness room, the, the weight room. And you make a reservation, you go in, you get 45 minutes to workout and then we close it and clean for 15 minutes. And then, you know, reopen it at that time. The cafe will be open. You'll make a reservation for one of two time slots. We have it super social distanced. And then, of course, a lot of the Arkansas Department of Health recommendations and guidelines posted for folks. But I know there's a lot of people that are just getting very antsy and we want to provide as safe of a venue as we can for that. And so the opening of the Center on the Lake will be very cautious, but will scale gradually. So there's that. I also wanted to point out C Click Fix. If you haven't used that, please use that. I dealt with a council member contacted me this week, Councilmember Gardner, with an issue that a resident had brought to their attention. And I just reported it quickly on C Click Fix and it's a really easy way for you guys to act. If, even if a resident contacts you about a pothole, a light out, that sort of stuff, you can just hop in to the app, Facebook or the webpage and report it really simply. And you can do it anonymously if you'd prefer. Councilmember Tierney?
How do you get access to this app? I think people would probably like to know that.
You can download it from the Apple Store or Google Play or your, your local app, wherever you download apps for phones and it's C Click Fix, one word. And then it's, it's geo-coded, so you just go to the map wherever that location is. You go to Facebook, the dot com slash City of Monell, our Facebook page, and there's a link on the left. I can't see it right now because I'm going live, but I want to say it says something along the lines of post a concern. Or you can go to the city's website and one of the circular icons kind of on the home landing page says something along the lines of report a problem or report a concern. And so you can do that and you can do that for your constituents also. Also, if you'd like, you can set it up so that you get email notified when it's going through the different stages or not, depending on if you want to deal with that. Councilmember Scott, did you have a question?
That was exactly my question. Thank you.
I, I've got it on my phone and I, I've occasionally just pull over on the side of the road and ping something, not on the boulevard. But it's really, really simple to do. Once you've get it installed and have done it once, you'll get the hang of it. It's really quick, easy. Since the last council meeting, we had the protest here in Monell and I think it goes, it's worth noting that it was a very uplifting event for those that were able to go or hear of it. We were a little bit nervous based on what we've heard in some other jurisdictions, but the organizers were there to protest not to cause trouble. We had some concerns about safety and we thought it was originally going to be on the Boulevard in Odom South, which we know is a pretty congested intersection. And the police department suggested that it moved to there, to the police station and try and turn it into a community event. Hot dogs were passed out. I believe a resident brought water to pass out. And so I want to, I want to say a special thank you to everyone that came out and protested and did so respectfully and also to the police department, who I think used this as an opportunity to listen to residents and not turn it into an us versus them activity. So I, I had said I would go out there on the night of and was a little bit nervous about what I was going to be driving into. And so I kind of came in a background and stopped in the Rolling Oaks Baptist Church and looked out and I just got goosebumps all over because what I saw in the street was people protesting and then mixed among them were officers that weren't there to form battle lines. I, I drove up and saw a, a, one of our black officers with his fist in the air in uniform with, there with everyone and it just reminded me that the end of the day, we're all, we're, we're all the same. And it was, it was really refreshing as opposed to looking to other jurisdictions where you see battle lines. And part of that was a big part because of the people protesting, were doing it the right way and a big part of it was the police. So I said that I just wanted to point that out. I think it went well and it made me proud to be in Monell. Finally, under Mayor's comments, the last thing is we need to discuss the next council meeting and whether we're going to hold it here live or hold it virtually. We can do it live. We won't be able to social distance with the city council members and city attorney and city clerk. And it, it's just that if we're going to do it in the new city council chambers, we won't be able to social distance the, the folks out in the audience can. And we can also set it up so that a few people can, can use Zoom if they don't feel safe coming to the, the council meeting. So with that, I'm going to open the floor. Let's discuss that and decide what we're going to do. Councilmember Williams?
Mayor Norris, I think I would be more comfortable waiting until we at least get into phase three. That the, let's, let's wait it out just a little bit longer. I think, you know, we're still just opening a little bit here and there. And I think I would, plus I like the fact that other people are able to watch and engage with us via social media, the way we're doing it. I mean, I don't propose that we do this forever, but I do think that it probably would be prudent and wise for us to, to wait a little while longer.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. To note, I, I do believe we are ready or would be ready by the next meeting to broadcast live on Facebook. The interaction, if you're sitting at home typing right now, might not be the same, but that would depend on what devices you brought. Councilmember Vapurzain?
I'm comfortable with what anyone else is comfortable with.
Oh, I like that safe comment.
If there's anyone else raising their hand, just trying to.
I just general question per our ordinance, we can group meet in person and then also have people meeting virtually. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It would be a little bit different in that whoever was meeting virtually wouldn't see everyone's faces on the screen like they are now. They would either just see my face or wherever we put the laptop, but they would be able to hear everything.
I guess we've been doing this now for when do we start? April, April, May, we're going into our third month. I don't know. To me, I I want us to be safe as well, but I think there's also something to be said for our city government being accessible and being easily, you know, being an easy option for people to come in and speak and and have their voices heard by the council. So I've had a bit of an issue this the last couple of months with us not being able to do that. I feel like the public should be able to to easily attend, and this this method, while they can't easily watch online, they would continue to be able to do that in our new council chambers, but it's just it's difficult for the public to actively participate in this format.
Mayor, does that mean that we would have to if we met the new council chamber? Are we going to have to wear those masks?
I think that would be in keeping with the the governor and the Arkansas Department of Health's recommendations at this time. The one benefit that we would have over at the gymnasium, which is, by the way, still an option, we could go to the community center and be properly social distanced. We just had so many different difficulties with audio that it made it difficult for everyone to hear everyone.
Well, I just have some problems with the mask. If I don't have to wear it, I don't want to wear it. It does two or three things according to all the medical evidence. It raises your carbon dioxide level. It raises your core body temperature because you're breathing in all that hot air. And I don't want to just sit there and spend the night wearing a mask if I don't have to. So I'm kind of like, I'd have to agree with Councilmember Williams. Let's wait and see what's going to happen here and let it cool off a little bit.
Considering the mask issue, I'd probably change my opinion to from being neutral to let's wait until we don't have to wear a mask.
Right. And and the mask, I I'm trying to think of the directives. I don't think there's any directives that would require it. I just know that when you I would imagine if the state were holding a similar meeting that they'd be wearing masks or properly social distanced, and since we wouldn't be able to do that, we wouldn't be able to spread out like that in the council meeting. Yeah. And I suppose it could be voluntary for the board. If someone didn't want to wear it, they wouldn't have to. I don't know. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm going to come down with Councilmember Williams on on this. I think still it would I do look forward to the day that we can use those new council chambers. And if we end up doing that and need to wear masks, I would recommend a cloth mask. I I wore one of those N95s at that one we had in the gymnasium, and I did about suffocate, but the cloth mask works pretty well. Thank you.
This will have the surgical type looking masks that are I like them. They're very light. You won't suffocate with those. But so it looks like we've got a split. How about this? Raise your hand if you want to wait.
Right. Raise your hand for waiting.
If you want to wait before holding an in-person meeting.
I don't.
What's that?
I don't care. Way.
It's literally split.
Got you. So how about this? You could put your hand down there, Councilmember Vapurzain, or you can unless you're holding it to talk. No, okay. So how about someone make a motion either way that we post?
I'll make a motion that we resume meeting at the July 5th council meeting in wait, July 6th council meeting in person, and it can be voted up or down.
We've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion or deliberation on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of meeting live on the next council meeting, say yes.
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 All opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Awesome. Again, I just wanted to see how many motions we can turn down tonight. Thankfully, that concludes Mayor's comments. Do I have any comments from council members? Councilmember Vapurzain?
Two quick things. I met some folks on Deville in Country Club of Arkansas. They were out for a walk and she had a bag, like a Kroger sack with her. And I said, what do you what do you got in the bag? And she goes, we walk through here every night with our dog, and we pick up trash. And I said, why? Why is there so much trash? And she said, because a lot of people use Deville as a cut through. And she said, people throw their trash out. And I said, well, I'll tell you what, I'll just let the mayor and the city council members know that. That keep an eye out because if they walk through there every night picking up trash, I'm glad that they do that. But I would whether it's a sign we could put up somewhere, no littering. I don't know what that would help. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. Second thing, this three o'clock this afternoon, I'm sitting here in my room looking out the front window, and two dogs ran in front, right through my front yard. One was a German Shepherd type, and the other was some kind of a pit bull type, had its ears pinned, but they moved kind of quickly. About an hour later, I got a call from some folks over on Hickory Lane. And so I drove over there and talked to little Lily, who's nine years old, who those two dogs yesterday killed her cat in the front yard. And I called immediately called Animal Services. They'd gotten several phone calls about them, and the dogs were still on the loose. They had not found them yet. So when when animals like this pack up together, they can be dangerous. I'm just glad Lily wasn't in the front yard. Her dad came out and was able to get the animals to leave, but she did the cat. And the cat was just laying in the front yard. So these are things that we need just to be made aware of, but family's name is Stokes, and they're at Nine Hickory Lane, and I just felt awful talking to that poor little girl because she sat there and watched her cat get killed by these two dogs. So just keep that in your file and be on the lookout. Let your constituents know that if there's some animals running loose, they need to call Animal Services or call the Momell Police if they see him packed up like that. Thank you.
And is correct. We and if you see dogs attacking or vicious dogs, you can call. You know, that constitutes an emergency, I think. We'll see if Chief Pickard disagrees. But I think you can call 911. In this instance, we are aware of that. Both animal control and law enforcement are looking for those particular dogs. So thank you for sharing. Was Councilmember Tierney?
Yeah, I'd like to just echo a little bit of what you said earlier about the protest in Momell. You know, when you're hearing all these stories about how bad these things go in some other cities around the country. It makes you real proud about Momell to see something that addresses real issues, but did it in a very good manner, peaceful manner of, you know, always said you want Gandhi with a, you know, a peaceful approach, managed to take down a whole nation and pre-hole nation. So, you know, really, when it all comes down to it, there's no such thing as, you know, white or black or red or blue or yellow or polka dot. They were all brothers and sisters. And, you know, I just I like to see people, you know, coming together like that, and I really want to, you know, compliment the police for being so proactive and, you know, and all protesters for handling themselves the way they did. I thought that was well done.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilmember Vapurzain for sharing that story. Had read about a dog pack attacking a little boy in a out in the county somewhere, and I have not heard a follow-up. They never did say what type of dogs, but it was a pack of dogs, and they actually killed this little boy. And anyway, I'm interested to see how that comes out. I know the owner was charged. Another thing I wanted to mention was I was down talking to some residents on Yazoo, and I think it's Cove. It's the little little street that comes off of Yazoo Circle and parallel's Momell Boulevard, but they they were asking for the city to consider maybe putting another street light kind of midway down that street. They've apparently been having some car break-ins and some things like that. They've got one down in the cul-de-sac, and it works well for them, but they said it's the folks between them and the corner. It gets pretty dark, and so I wanted to mention that. And then I also wanted to just ask and see if it looks like we're on course to to make that deadline. It seems like it was June 28th on the audit.
30th, June 30th.
June 30th, okay.
No.
Pardon?
No, we're not on track to make that. And so we are still working on reconciliations, which was what I anticipated being completed the week of the last council meeting, and it is not yet complete.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Just two quick things. I wanted to correct what I said about the fireworks. Councilmember Vapurzain, you can shoot those off from 4:30 to 10:30, so you have an extra 30 minutes. So just wanted to let you know that. But you, according to city codes, you can't have more than 25 people, so keep your party small. So 4:30 to 10:30, less than 25 people. And also, Mayor, if you would compliment Parks and Rec and tell them they're doing a great job with the pool. Our family's been enjoying that, and they have been doing a fantastic job with it, and those little kids sure are enjoying the toddler area with the pump working again. So thank you to getting that done so quickly.
Yes, they've done Parks and Rec has done a great job, and it has helped that the folks that use the pool are are being respectful of the the state's guidelines so that we're not having to to enforce them too much. So that's makes it easy. Any additional council member comments? All right, we'll move on to city attorney's comments.
I wanted to address Councilmember Mosley's comment just a little bit. The mayor and I both spoke to Mark Gennay, who's with, I believe, is it Legislative Audit is?
He's with the Arkansas Bonding Authority?
Okay, that's I they are kind of associated entities, I believe. So we did discuss with him our situation as far as our fidelity bonding. And he had already told the mayor that, you know, for this year, at the present time, for 2019 and 2020, we are still bonded. Because, you know, that's a statutory function that that bond has been in place for multiple years, and that hasn't changed. And we are not out of time or untimely in our audit responses for those years. The only issue would be 2018, and I asked him, I said, well, do we need to try to get bonding for 2018 since it's already gone? If we can get it, and he said, the key part of what you just said is the last phrase, if we can get it. And he's, you know, because he didn't think that was very likely, but recommended that I go ahead and call an independent property and casualty agent and just see what I could find out. So I did. I contacted Stevens Insurance that has they do a wide variety of bonding and other, of course, insurance products as well. What they told me is that for 2018, I'm trying to remember how she phrased it, the horse is already out of the gate. Was the way that she phrased that, you know, and it makes sense because insurance is you're insuring against a future risk. And 2018 is long gone. So the the issue is that, you know, we do currently have bonding as we're required to make sure the city does at this time. And 2018 bonding is impossible for us to get as far as we've been able to determine.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? I did have one other thing. If anybody wanted to jump in there, though, want to give them a chance. All right. And the only other thing I wanted to just say is that I also attended the protest and just want to commend the organizers. They did a fantastic job making it a positive event for our community, along with the police officers and and my own daughter, who made 100 chocolate chip cookies to go with those hot dogs. So very, you know, good to just talk to your neighbors and to see our young people out being active and participating in that. And that's it for me.
Thank you. We will move on to city clerk's comments.
No comments.
Outstanding. With that, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion on that? Councilmember Holt?
No, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm doodling.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion is adjourned. Thank you to y'all, and thank you to those who are watching live on Facebook.